Heritage. So, we are going to declare the whole month of April as National Poetry Month here in Santa Barbara, and we thank you so much for being our poet laureate.
It's my pleasure.
There you go.
That sounds fine.
Yes, I just want to briefly thank Perry again for all that she does for poetry in the city, and to let you know this first Thursday, the focus is all about poetry. So, we will have some of the students that participated in the Poetry Out Loud competition will be doing recitations at galleries in different places around town, and I think there's also a participatory poetry event and contest that you can be involved in. So, I encourage you to think about attending. And also, Perry has put together with some Santa Barbara poets, some poetry that they've written in conjunction with our, in response to our Essential Workers Show at the Channing Peak Gallery. So, again, I thank Perry for organizing that, and I encourage you to attend. I believe it starts at 6:00, but just pick up a downtown First Thursday map and find out about it. And now, I believe that our poet laureate has written something to honor our month of poetry.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, the Essential Workers Show actually starts at 6:30, and one of the poets, who's a computer whiz, has put together a chapbook of all the poems that the poets have written about the essential workers. So, we thought that would be a nice little part of the show. And there are events going on in April, all April long, so I think they'll be in various newspapers and things. So, oh, and I wanted to say that Barry Spacks, who is our poet laureate emeritus, is going to be emceeing the Essential Worker, because I'm going to be in Sacramento at the first ever gathering of all the poet laureates of California.
Wow.
And there's 26 of us. So, I will report back next time I read a poem to you.
Thank you.
Will you be lobbying?
Of course, for more money for poet laureates. Kidding. Maybe a little. What's he doing? I want to say, well, I'll just read the poem. I've been teaching in the schools for like 25 years to young students, and about, I don't know, maybe about 12 years ago, this little boy got up and he read his poem, and I said, "That's just wonderful." And he said, "Every time I write a poem, I fall in love with it."
Oh.
And I was thinking about that about two weeks ago and thought, "I'm going to write a poem with that quote in mind," because that's what poets do. And, you know, it's good to have this day on April Fool's Day, because we're all so foolish. Not anything usually we ever plan to do with our lives, it just sort of happens. Every time I write a poem, I fall in love with it, the smell of it. The raspberry buttercream frosting spread all over, small vanilla cakes of it. The musk that opened static ducts in the press of pine needles soft on the spall of the back comes to mind. His eyes full of each inch of you, the breath in his, the breath out yours. How the hushed forest awoke when your songs scattered the meadow larks into the blank blue sky. And then there's the writing of it. How Chinese white pear blossoms catch in the wind like snow, settle on the tips of winter's brown twigs. With your favorite pen in hand, the smooth one whose ink flows evenly across the flesh of the page, words start to come, one against the other, small kisses lined up. Soon you're swimming in them, you're with them, you pull back, they chase you, catch you. Together you trace roads of memory, and they remind you of what is true. There will be no truce until you focus, give your all, release. Child, the poem you birthed, folded in your pocket, is what we live for, what saves us, what drives us mad. These words, we may one day die for. Poets are crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We have public comment, and I just wanted to, I was gone for a couple of weeks, I was on a trip, and when I came back, the public comment has just been filling almost an hour. And the truth is, we've got 18 items that we need to get through. So, I look back at the rules, and our procedural rules say that the total amount of time for public comment shall be 15 minutes. That's all added together. No individual speaker may speak for more than a minute. The idea of public comment is bring something to our attention, so we can add it to an agenda later, or to do something that's within our jurisdiction. So, what I have done is set the clock at one minute, and you can make your point, Mr. Cushman's going to try, and we'll see how he does. Each of us can make our point, and then we'll make sure that it's not more than 15 minutes, without objection. Okay, Mr. Cushman.
Hello, Steve Cushman, President of the Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce. The sails are red, the waters are blue. Support the Maritime Museum, and I'll love you. Now, hers was much better. That's my point. Thank you for the State of the City. I thought Jim and the mayor did a wonderful job, and the staff did a best one we've ever had. I think it was the 17th State of the City. And I'm soliciting volunteers, I'm the president of the Book and Author Festival this year, so anybody who's listening, watching, love books, love poetry, give me a call, come help us. Thank you.
Thank you, he did that in 30 seconds. The State of the City address is now on our website, so you can read it and look at it, so that's good. Okay, Steve Cushman, that's one, 30 seconds. Pretty good. Leoncio Martins, followed by Richard Robinson.
Leoncio.
Leoncio, thank you.
Thank you for giving this opportunity. I'm here to ask first one question, why you haven't passed the resolution for impeachment of Bush and Cheney? Well, everybody quiet.
Oh, we're not allowed to talk about things on our agenda.
It's a clearly high time for American citizen. Whatever our politics, who care about the Constitution, American democracy, the base of freedoms that we as a nation have assumed, for over two centuries to be a birthright to demand that discriminer in Supreme in the White House be called to account, along with his cronies, especially Vice President Dick Cheney. Impeachment is the patriarch duty of anyone who has sworn to protect and defend the Constitution. No member as the Santa Barbara City Council should be re-elected who doesn't support putting this president in the dark.
Okay, thank you. Richard Robinson will be followed by Derek Wilkins.
Omar Khayyam, ma'am, members. Come fill the cup, and in the fire of spring, the winter garment of repentance fling. The bird of time hath but little way to fly, and lo, the bird is on the wing. Ma'am, Santa Barbara's general plan update process, Plan Santa Barbara, the meeting at the Faulkner Gallery. Citizen input can have, it could have stopped years ago, the town's unchecked, unplanned Sustaining a green town with pristine beaches is attainable, even with the increasing numbers of tourists and other visitors. Establishing protocols that will protect the environment, and policies that will focus upon the proper scoping of future budgetary parameters.
Okay, thank you.
Creative solutions, and thank you.
Thank you. Derek Wilkins will be followed by Bob Hanson. Bob, there's a microphone over there that we usually move down. Oh, he's going to take care of it, thanks. And there you go.
Hello, I'm City Council people. All right, this is the deal here. This town's not accessible for people with disabilities. People in wheelchairs have a hard time up and down the streets because of their disabilities. They don't have anything going on good for them out in these streets of Santa Barbara, because it's not equipped for people in wheelchairs. They don't have bathrooms at nighttime for people that's homeless and that's disabled. This building itself is not equipped for people in wheelchairs. So, my thing is, is that something needs to be done about it. If you can't do nothing about it, then I guess I got to go about fighting against y'all to do something about it. You ain't going to put it on the agenda, you should put it on the agenda, because we need the right to be disabled in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Hanson will be followed by Megan Inconia. I hope I got that right.
Good afternoon. We've got one minute. It's not ticking, though. There it goes, already. At the shelter, they closed the winter shelter today. So, tonight, there'll be 100 people out on the streets with 100 empty beds, in probably the downtown Milpus area. It would be nice if we could get a report from the police department of what's really happening in our community with the homeless. Is there a lot of women? Is there a lot of people with mental problems? Let's ask that question, because they're the ones that are on the front lines, they really see it more than all of us. We might see a few, but they go on out and make complaints and other agendas, and checking it out and seeing what's really happening. Are the places that they sleep, do they have restrooms? I don't think so. And there needs to be a restroom down on Lower Milpus. You have one over by the fig tree, and we have one over by Max Grossengriff. There needs to be one down there between 8:00 at night and 8:00 in the morning.
Okay, thank you very much.
There's no restrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Inconia.
Not good restroom.
Thank you.
People, people, no matter. Good afternoon, City Council members and Honorable Mayor. I'm here to talk about bringing prayer back into the City Council meetings, and I just wanted to speak on behalf of the youth that are living in Santa Barbara. I personally just find that prayer allows us to come together under unity, and I'm passionate about our community, and I'm passionate about unifying different people groups that are living here. And I just, yesterday, I was in downtown LA, and I went out with my friends to hand out some food to some different people in some slum areas. And because we didn't just hand them a bag of food, but we asked them what was going on in their lives, and if they had any prayer needs, they really allowed us access to them on a deeper level, and we were unified, and we were walking in areas that normally would be very, very dangerous, and we would probably be ridiculed, but people were very open to us. And I just feel that prayer allows people to come together under a common ground, and so I think it would be very beneficial for our city to bring it back really to what it's founded on, and that's what it says that over on the entrance to our courthouse, that God gave us this country, and the skill of man has built our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. William Pennington will be followed by Michael Self. Pennington.
Hi, I'm Mr. Pennington. I'm here again with the same issue, violation of federal and state law. The city of Santa Barbara is in violation of federal and state law regarding, I'm sure you know, the American Disability Act. And I also had issues about, I saw some tourists on the trolley, and a two-year-old kid almost fell off, like walked right off the trolley underneath the overpass around State Street. And I think that vehicle is an endangerment to like the people of Santa Barbara and the visitors that come to this town. I believe that the city should act upon it when they see a possibility of somebody, you know, endangering people. It's up to you, the council, to see that and realize that, you know, safety of people and their lives and their well-being is in your hands. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Self, be followed by Mike Jordan.
Mayor and Council, my name is Michael Self. I'm President of Santa Barbara Safe Streets. I'm disappointed, but not surprised, that because so many residents want to come and speak at public comment, and they're hoping that they'll be heard by you, by limiting public comment to one minute from two, in the belief that we're taking too much of your time, and making important people wait too long to give their presentations, is embarrassing to you. I'd like you to consider that there is so much discontent in Santa Barbara's community against the ruling class and its staff, that we're willing to spend the time and the gas money to plea for our causes. It's painfully obvious that you have not been listening to the people, so why not cut their time in half? A soundbite is as good as a sentence, it makes perfect sense. Mayor Blum, you said on your Saturday radio show that we can make our point in one minute. So, I hope this time-saving policy would also apply to you in these chambers with the council members, and this would be a benefit for all of us.
Thank you. Mike Jordan, followed by Mike Foley. I'm sorry, I've got one tucked in here before Mike Foley. Brett Hughes. So, Mike Jordan, then Brett Hughes.
Happy to be here, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I was invited to a meeting yesterday, thanks to Councilmember Schneider, having to do with the county's mental health cuts, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. I'll try and get my two suggestions out in a minute, and one would be that you need to reach out to people like me, who at the end of the day, basically just want to get up and down State Street or in the community without being verbally or physically assaulted. And it's clear that this is a political issue, where we should be pummeling our council member, not our council members, our supervisors and the county on resolving it in a political manner. And I would encourage you and suggest that one way to do that would be to get this item on the agenda, to where it's publicized to the general community, and more people like me can be involved in that process. Another suggestion I'd have, and I know Mike Foley's queued up behind me, too, is that, just how frustrating is it while you're going through that process, that the capacity gets cut on the homeless center as of today, and we're operating at less than capacity? Is this not the time to open back up those discussions with the area residents, to try and find a way that the city can put resources there that will resolve their issues and allow that facility to keep operating at capacity? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Brett Hughes. And the last speaker will be Michael Foley.
For some people, April Fools lasts all year long. These fools think that exercising the rights guaranteed by the Constitution is called unpatriotic, while the destruction of those rights is called the Patriot Act. These fools think that oppressing the people of Iraq, stealing their resources, and killing the people, and destroying their nation is called winning the war on terror. These fools think that supporting our soldiers means that our soldiers, using our soldiers not to defend the United States, but to attack weaker nations for economic and military exploitation, while breaking our contracts with our soldiers to extend their combat duty beyond what any soldier should ever have to endure, and deploying them with inadequate training, equipment, and concern, and defunding the veteran healthcare system to the point that has become a disgrace to our soldiers and our nation. We must impeach the president that lies to the American people, and treat them like year-long April fools.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Mike Foley will be our last speaker.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I absolutely understand your decision to go to one minute after watching public comment on the Internet last week. However, I wasn't aware that that was going to happen this week, and I have about two minutes of comments.
I put it on there, if you look.
If I.
Because we have a little bit left.
Thank you.
People were very wonderful.
I promise that I'll come to a few more meetings.
It's not that we don't want to hear, it just has to do with.
Absolutely. I'll come to a few meetings and sit in the back and not say anything as comments.
You don't have to do that.
Today, the Casa Esperanza Homeless Center closes 100 beds, marking the conclusion of the 2008 Winter Shelter Program. I think it's fitting that the closure happens on April 1st, in keeping with the theme of the day. When I first came to Casa Esperanza, I began working to improve our relationship with neighborhood business, and promised that I would not stand before you with a proposal to change our conditional use permit until there were stronger procedures in place to mitigate the impact of homelessness on Lower Milpus. I worked diligently with the Milpus Action Task Force, and we created those mitigating solutions. It was called the Santa Barbara Recovery Zone, and we presented it in a special meeting nearly one year ago. Almost nothing has happened since. We proposed to re-establish a permanent daily proactive police presence in Lower Milpus. Proactive policing remains sporadic. We proposed banning probationers and parolees convicted of selling drugs from establishing a presence in Lower Milpus. Still nothing. We proposed the creation of zoning regulations to control the over-concentration of liquor licenses in the area, and we proposed that medical marijuana dispensaries should be prohibited within one mile of Casa Esperanza, the rescue mission, and Project Recovery. And today, we have an ordinance that adds marijuana dispensaries to our 31 liquor licenses within just a few short blocks of our recovery programs. And now today, 100 people who were safely housed on a nightly basis will be sleeping on the dirt sidewalks and in bushes. 15 women who do not yet meet transitional living standards will abandon safe beds, and will hit the streets with shiny new whistles to blow if they need help. In a few days, the homeless camps will be full yet again, and pretty soon, our neighbors will demand action. Right before summer solstice, or if not before, the camps will be broken up by law enforcement, and even more camps will re-concentrate in the Lower Milpus area. Then, the Milpus neighborhood will be up in arms, and the Milpus camps will be broken up, and the problem will move to the libraries, State Street, and the parks. As Fiesta approaches, law enforcement will be forced into action again, and everything will move back to Lower Milpus. But this time, the tactical police squad will be focusing on State Street and gang suppression, and the five officers on the narcotics squad will not have enough time keeping up with the drug dealers. They will be waiting, like vultures, waiting for easy prey in Lower Milpus Street. Then, in September or October, when the neighborhood can't take it anymore, law enforcement will swoop in, and you'll spend thousands and thousands of dollars in booking fees to put people in a jail that has no room for them. It is an incredibly familiar hole that we walk into every year. After year, we walk into that hole. There will be homeless people who need and want help and a place to sleep, and we will have 24,500 empty bed nights. If the homeless death trend continues, we could have up to 30 deaths on the streets, and many of those deaths could be avoided. Last year, a homeless addict was raped, and a few days later, OD'd near the Milpus Roundabout. A few days later, her former husband and her 10-year-old daughter came to my door. They were looking for some of her belongings that might still be at Casa, and the 10-year-old told me that she was looking for a necklace that she wanted to keep and that she wanted to wear. The only way that those of us who do this work can keep dealing with this unyielding sadness day after day is in knowing that we are doing the very best that we can do. The closure of 100 beds today is not the very best that we can do. Tonight, 100 beds will be filled, and people will be on the waiting list, and they will be turned away. And I point out that this situation makes the city vulnerable to the same injunction that allows people to sleep on the sidewalks in Los Angeles. I try to keep my promises, and indeed, the mitigators we need are still not in place for the Milpus neighborhood. I encourage you to enact the recovery zone proposal, and to consider forcing my hand on increasing capacity. The mentally and the homeless addicts desperately need this help, and they need it right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Consent. Madam Mayor? This is not on our agenda, and so conversation about this issue is inappropriate for today. But I would, I do think that it's time that we reexamine this issue of what we do with the 100 beds during the rest of the year. And I would ask that, if somebody would like to partner with me, to ask Mr. Armstrong to put this on a future agenda as soon as possible.
That's fine, I'll do it.
Maybe we can talk about also forming a task force that has all the various different parties involved. Several of us, police, Mr. Foley, merchants, and stakeholders that are down in the area, because I do think that it's time we do that, and thank you, Ms. Schneider.
Ms. Falcone.
And the homeless.
Ms. Falcone, though, you have to know that it's up to them to ask for the 100 extra beds, because part of it was, I was on that board, and they have trouble with the finances. So, I think it's, you know, it's a financial question. I know we can't discuss it here, but I wrote a note to Mr. Foley to go ahead and talk to your board about getting the extra 100 beds.
That's why I helped putting it on the agenda, and being able to have the conversation, where they can come and ask us if that's what they want, tell us, you know, about the financial constraints. And we can then develop a task force that can get into more of the nitty-gritty. I think it's time we do that, though.
Okay. Okay, we have a consent calendar. Do you have something to read, don't you, Brenda? Go ahead.
Item number nine, restatement and simplification of employee coverage group. References to the public employees retirement system. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to establish a pre-tax payroll deduction plan for service credit purchases under the California Public Employees Retirement System. Item number 10, after-school program hourly school year continuity incentive. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a school continuity incentive for certain hourly employees working in after-school programs. And item number 11, purchase of property interest for Haley de la Vina Street Bridge Replacement Project. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to acquire and accept various property interests located at 136 West Haley Street, 132 West Haley Street, 119 West Haley Street, and 507 Brinkerhoff Avenue, and authorizing the Public Works Director, subject to review and approval of the form of the agreements by the city attorney, to execute four separate agreements and related documents that may be required, including, among others, necessary escrow instructions and supplemental rehabilitation cost reimbursement agreements, all relating to the proposed Haley and de la Vina Streets Bridge Replacement Project, and consenting to the recordation of the related deeds in the official records county of Santa Barbara.
Okay, that's reading by title only, without objection. We'll wait for the reading. Mr., I think, Mr. Horton wants to take item what?
Item 10, please.
Okay. Any other items we want to take off the consent calendar? Okay, item 10 has to do.
.........
Thank you. On April Fool's Day, that would be a hard birthday to have, wouldn't it? Oh, well. After-school program.
Something tells me that Bob enjoys having that birthday.
Mr. Horton.
Yes, I don't need to vote on this separately, but I just did want to point out that in the city, we certainly don't have all the responsibility for the youth of our community, but after-school programs is a way that we can work with the school system and the community.
Right.
To try to serve our youth. And this item 10 here is a way of attempting to establish a continuity of staff to work with the kids after school. It applies to 14 elementary and junior high schools, and the idea is to keep experienced and trained staff at those programs, so they can work with the kids. And probably one of the most vital times of the school year is the after-school hours. And so, I just wanted to point that out, and we can go ahead and vote on the consent calendar, which I shall move.
Okay. Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinance committee, Mr. Williams.
The ordinance committee met today at 12:30 to discuss changes to the inclusionary housing ordinance. By a two-to-one vote, we did forward onto the council recommendations for changing the inclusionary housing ordinance to eliminate the under-10 units loophole, and to change in lieu fees, and various other small changes to the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Finance committee, Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Finance committee met today at 12:30 in the Gebhardt Room. We were televised. We had two items of discussion, the interim financial statements for the eight-month period ending February 29th, and we recommended that onto council in today's consent calendar. And then, we had a discussion on the proposed telecommunications UUT tax, and that will be coming up in a future council hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Then, we are on to item 15, please.
Item number 15, Integrated Pest Management 2007 Annual Report.
Okay, and this is for, I see Nancy Rapp coming here, and Santos Escobar is looking at the computer screen, which 15 years ago, we didn't have, when he first started, huh? There we go. Ms. Rapp, did you want to say anything, or?
Well, I'm not going to steal his thunder, that always happens. But we are very proud to be here with our fourth formal presentation of how the city has progressed toward our goal of reducing toxic pesticides in our city parks and facilities. Good news this year, our weather cooperated. And with that, I'll pass it off to Parks Manager Santos Escobar.
Okay, Mr. Escobar.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Santos Escobar, Parks Manager, and also the city's IPM Coordinator. I'm very happy to be here for our 2007 annual IPM report. This is also our fourth report that we have given to you. So, just a quick overview regards to integrated pest management. Integrated Pest Management, also known as IPM, is an effective environmentally sensitive decision-making process, and the goal naturally is to minimize health and environmental, by natural risk. Within our IPM strategy, the purpose of that is, within our cities, to reduce and eliminate the use of pesticides, products that pose known likely or probable human health or environmental risk, and also promote the use of non-hazardous and reduce-risk alternatives that are protective of human health and the environment as well. that are protective of human health and the environment as well. Our pesticide hazard exposure reduction, known as the Fair Zone, assigns models to a color system that are either green, yellow, or special circumstance areas, also known as red zones, and allows use of carefully screened materials by zone designations. I'm very proud to report this year, our citywide highlights, which are, the reduction of applied pesticides has decreased by 51%. The units of green material has decreased by 92%. Units of yellow materials have decreased by 39%. The units of red material has decreased by 87%. These are very good numbers, and the reduction was predominantly due to a record dry year. As you can tell in our citywide pesticide use graph here, if you look at the 2004 report that is there, and go to 2007, the reductions are just great. Our Parks Division highlights, the use of pesticides has decreased by 33%. Also, the use of the green materials decreased this year by 56%, as well as a reduction in yellow materials by 39%, and no red materials were used in 2007. Another item that I'm very proud to talk about is our concrete mow strips. We went through and installed over 5,687 lineal feet of mow strips, and this is partly because of your great leadership, City Council. So I really appreciate that. We were also able to go through and change Dwight Murphy Park, which was a green park, excuse me, a yellow park, into a 100% green park. So that's something to be very proud of. Also, with our green team, our green team and our other staff, we were able to go through and apply over 2,000 yards of mulch in our park system, which is a very high number. And in regards to our pesticide use from 1999 to 2007, you can see the spread there, and it's...
Rather dramatic.
Good news as well.
Can you guess what we adopted?
The Golf Division highlights, overall, the units applied decreased by 56%. There was a 93% reduction of red material, and also a 17% increase in yellow material as well. And a lot of this is partly due to our golf course manager, Scott Jorgensen, and his use of compost teas on our golf greens, which has been a big positive light in regards to the use of pesticides. And Scott and his team, on a morning, every morning, they go through and they brew these effective microorganisms, and they're on-site at 4:00 a.m. applying these materials. It's quite a sight.
Kind of amazing.
And our Golf Division pesticide use, as you can tell, from 2002 to 2007 has been a huge reduction. And once again, this is due to low rainfall this past year. The Airport Department highlights, I'm proud to also let you know that pesticides applied decreased by 39%. The applications for mosquitoes, which mosquitoes, as we're all aware, are a known threat with the West Nile virus, we're able to go through and decrease that this past year by 42%. Yellow material, known as Dytrac, to control rodents, also did increase, however, but that's much needed due to FAA regulations. Real positive note in regards to overall units of applied pesticides for the coming years is because of the construction of the runway safety areas, additional airfield light lanes were paved. This will also go through and reduce pesticide use at the airport. And you can tell here in regards to reductions in the red material, which is great, the accumulation of pesticides has reduced as well. Public Works Department highlights, units applied decreased by 99%. Units of green material decreased by 99%. Also, yellow materials decreased by 99%, and there were no red materials used in 2007. Once again, this reduction was due almost entirely to record-low rainfalls in 2007 resulting in decreased mosquito populations. So that's the real key there. And also regarding rodent control along State Street Corridor, Coast Village Road Corridor, the application to pesticides is zero. All of that rodent control is done by trapping on a daily and weekly and monthly basis. And in regards to Public Works, it's, the reductions are very low, as you can tell. Approvals, recommendations for approvals, on February 27, 2008, we had approval by Citizens IPM Advisory Committee. On March 19, we also had approval by the Airports Commission. And March 26, we also had the approval of our report by the Parks and Recreation Commission. I have some beautiful photos to show you of our park staff working very hard. Left-hand corner is at Chase Palm Park, and we are going through and weeding. At the bottom right is the AC Postale Memorial Rose Garden, and we are applying naturally very fine mulch to our rose garden. Left-hand corner, Shoreline Park, or excuse me, Shoreline median strip, we have our Zebby Stevens going through and knocking down weeds along that area. The right-hand corner at Alice Keck Park, Robert Fournay weeding out a bed at Alice Keck. And the right-hand corner is at the back of the main library, and we are diligently applying mulch, but we also went through and installed a brand-new sustainable landscape, and that was with the help of the water conservation folks with our city. In regards to these photos here, it's just our contractor applying some concrete and doing our mow shifts. This is at McKenzie Park on our ball field. If you haven't seen it, please go have a look at it. The job came out very nicely. Top-corner photo here is, you're probably wondering what we're spreading. We're spreading what's known as worm gold, and it's a material that we found very effective. The trees here are at Willow Glen Park. These trees here, at one time, were shrubs, and we grew them into trees. And it's xylusma, and this particular plant material here, for some reason, ends up getting giant whitefly. And we found that with using worm gold, like we've used at Alice Keck Park and also at the AC Postale Memorial Rose Garden, we've been able to go through and reduce the amount of whitefly and other insects in our park system. The right-hand corner is our Oak Park Bridge, and here we're doing a sustainable landscape. Left-hand corner here is Dwight Murphy Ball Field. As I stated, this is now a 100% green park. I'm very proud of this park in regards to the concrete mow strip, and also a brand-new fence, not only at the soccer field, but also at the playground, the exercise yard that we have there, and also the softball field. And the bottom right-hand corner is the Garden Street median. If you haven't seen this, this is at Garden Street, Cabrillo Boulevard, and we are applying a brand-new sustainable landscape. Some of this funding was done through our beautiful, Santa Barbara beautiful. So here we are with staff going through and adding succulents to this median strip, adding not only a curb appeal, but sustainability that folks can use in their own backyard. We also went through, as opposed to applying mulch, we're trying for a first time using decomposed granite as a infill mix. So we'll be going through and reviewing that in the future to see if we use it in other parks. So this concludes my presentation. I do have staff here, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Jeff McKee with the airport, our golf course superintendent, Scott Jorgensen. We also have Mr. Ken Brown, who is in charge of our green team and also helps me out with our reports, and does a fabulous job, and I want to thank him for all his hard work. We also have Mark Roush and Steve Takaya for Parks. Also, Jogan Zales, interim building maintenance supervisor, and...
Who else do we have back here?
I think that's it. So I just, we're open for questions, so any questions that you have, we're ready for them.
We also have Eric Cardenas. Where's Eric? Oh, there you are. You're hiding back there. You want to come up and give us...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, and then we can...
How's everybody doing?
Fine.
Is this thing going to start?
Oh, there.
What's happening here? There we go. One minute, three, two. What's your pleasure?
We're now into our agenda.
All right. My name's Eric Cardenas. As many of you know, I direct the Central Coast Environmental Health Project at the Environmental Defense Center. And yeah, I'd also like to start by acknowledging the staff sitting back here and other staff that's not in the chambers today for doing such a great job on this program. As many of you recall, but maybe not all of you, about 2001, myself and some other members of the community started to meet with the Parks Director at that time to figure out how we could implement a program that really reduced our pesticide use in this city and this community. After a couple of years, two to three years of kind of figuring out the best way to go about this, with your support, the council unanimously adopted a program in 2004, which the goals were to reduce and eliminate pesticides and other toxic materials in Santa Barbara. As you've seen today, we're at about 85% reduction overall, and 51% reduction in the last year alone. So I think we've made some really, really great strides. And now that we've done this a few years, I have to keep reminding myself, and maybe you and others, of why, why we took this step. Pesticides are known to cause cancer, reproductive harm, nervous system disorders, and a number of other illnesses among the community at large, and there are some other communities that are disproportionately affected. We have to remember that pesticides aren't just used in gardens and homes, but they're used in the farms, they're used all over the place. And so when we look at the big picture, human health is definitely potentially impacted, and then, of course, these toxins can get into the environment. So you guys made a great move in 2004 by adopting this program. In the last year, I think Santos showed you the main highlights, so I don't need to repeat those, but one thing is that, as you saw in the slides, no red materials were applied by the Parks Department or the Public Works Department, which is really, really good. Non-pesticide techniques were used. What do I have here? Manual rodent trapping occurred on State Street and Coast Village Road. Catch-and-release techniques for bees, which is something that we've tried this year, and it's been really successful. Public Works has been in charge of that. Heat treatment for the control of termites, and compost teas that you guys, as you guys have seen for the last few years at the golf course, which is something really unique, really cool. And from what we understand, Scott is pretty successful out there, and I think other places should be looking at replicating that. So that's been really good. There's a couple of areas that you probably saw in our letter to the council and the Parks Commission and the Airport Commission that we feel could be improved, and I think we've said this a few times now, volunteer efforts. Very important. The city has made efforts to increase volunteer support of this program, but I think more can be done. Something like an established volunteer coordinator, whether it's for the entire city or for the Parks Department, but somebody that can really spend time on coordinating volunteer efforts. I know that there are existing volunteer programs, but there's probably more that we can do there. We just had a new addition to our advisory committee, Cory Wells, who works at Lotusland. I think that's going to be a great addition, especially for how we work with our plants, our plant specimens, and try to reduce any kinds of pesticide applications there. He's already been helping with the Morton Bay fig tree and how we're going to address bringing that tree back to full health, because as you've been aware, for the last couple of years, it's had some health issues, and that's a specimen tree in our community. So I think Cory's going to bring some really good insight to that. And I think I'll just leave it at that for now. I think public relations is a really important aspect of this program. You guys were awarded with an IPM Innovators Award by the State Department of Pesticide Regulation in January. Congratulations again. We already praised you a few times for that, and your staff as well. But I think that really needs to kind of kick us in the pants a little bit, hold us to a higher level, how we support this program, how we implement this program, and the support that staff gets, but also really using that as a media opportunity, and really promoting that, whether it's through the chamber, or the Chamber of Commerce, or in the water bills that go out to the public. But I say really exploit that and the success that we've had here to really garner more support for this program and for the work that your staff is doing. So the advisory committee, which I am the chair of, has read through the document, the annual report, and supports it. We met this morning, actually, to do our other business related to the program. But anybody watching this publicly, I would also say, contact the Parks Department. Definitely, we're looking for more volunteer hours, and anybody that has other ideas of how to make this program succeed would be greatly appreciated. So thanks to the council for your guys' support, and to your staff again. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your work, Eric, too. Okay, to the council. Oh, we have Everybody Wants to Speak. What do you know? Ms. Schneider?
Thank you. Still my favorite vote. And could you put the graph up that showed from 1999 to the present?
That's amazing.
Keep going. There you go. I mean, it's obvious which year we adopted the IPM policy. That was in 2004, and the big drop there. And I think it didn't happen just by magic. Two things, a new way of thinking about how we do things in terms of maintenance, and a whole lot of work from the crew out there. So I want to acknowledge the staff who probably have, maybe they're more limber now that they bend over more in terms of weeding as opposed to using other devices, but hopefully, but you can tell, I mean, it does make a big difference in the overall impact. I want to say now that because there was no rain in the reduction, doesn't mean next year, when you come, because we did have rain, means that we failed in some way, because I have a feeling that the increase in rain is going to increase weeds or mosquitoes or whatever, and there might be some applications here and there. But I think the system is such that now we take such good care in figuring out, is it absolutely necessary to use those different types of pesticides? And to have that mechanism move forward is important. Next year, I think, will be then the five-year mark. And to me, the next step, as we're looking at citywide, is more of a PR piece of household, what happens in your homes. And I know Mr. Williams has talked about this from the beginning, too, and what can we do in promoting our general maintenance practices to get that word out to the general public for their own backyards? So that way, it's not just the city parks that are 99% green, it's the whole city. And that, I'm not quite sure how to do that, but I think it's part of the PR piece and getting the word out about what kind of resources and availability of options other than pesticides that it's so easy just to go to Ace Hardware or somewhere to pick up, you know, instead of picking up the Roundup, you pick up a bunch of mulch, or you pick up some other materials. And to really try to, I know we do that somewhat, but to maybe step that up a bit as we're getting so used to doing this on a regular basis. And I think Mr. Cardenas has a good point about a volunteer coordinator to some extent, about how can we extend the time it takes and the human resources we need in order to make this work? Because it is more expensive in terms of labor, although it's much less expensive in terms of our health long-term. But if there's a way to then get more volunteers to be part of this and work with our staff, that also might help us in the PR piece of making it, well, if I do this at Alice Keck Park, I can certainly do this in my backyard. So just sort of thinking ahead, and again, just congratulations, an excellent report, and thank you for all your work.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Falcone? Well, it's one of those items where you just want to, you know, have a love fest and thank everybody. But in the beginning, it wasn't so easy. And I remember Eric and Estelle, and there were a few of us here on the board when we, when you first started coming. And there was, you know, there was a lot of, you know, maybe it's going to work, and maybe it's going to not. But I think when Nancy brought in the Fair Program, that also went a long way to really helping us to quantify and qualify what it is we were doing anyway in the parks that maybe were being read in slightly different ways. So it clearly is nothing but good. And I want to thank Eric, and I want to thank Estelle, and I want to thank the rest of your committee for the work that you do, not only with staff that had to figure out a whole new way of operating, but also with the community, and selling it to the community, getting people to understand what it is you're talking about. And, you know, the staff really does have very, very difficult work, and there aren't enough of them. And so maybe the volunteer aspect is something really worth looking into, but I'm sure that one of the hesitations is that volunteers don't necessarily follow through as much as one would really anticipate and expect from an employee. But there's something in the middle, and that would be apprenticeships, and maybe training programs, and kids who want to, young people who want to maybe study... programs and kids who want to, young people who want to maybe study some sort of land use chemistry and horticulture and animal husbandry and all the various different things that can go into what you do out there. So I put that forward to maybe think about, because I think that might be useful in youth training programs, and they certainly wouldn't cost as much as a regular SCIU employee, for sure. But you might get the actual commitment if there's credits or there are some real applicable training opportunity. And since we're in that mode these days of really reaching out to our young folks, I think this might be a prime fertile land, as they might say. So I do have one question, though, and it's not a pleasant question, and it involves something none of us want to think about. But a good chunk of the park shoreline fell down for absolutely no reasons, except that that's what the earth in that neighborhood really does. But a lot of people, there was a meeting in the park about 10 days ago or so, and a lot of people, and you were there, Santos, and Nancy, you were there as well, Jill was there. And a lot of the people, their questions revolved around, well, what caused this? And many, many people think that it's the squirrels. And there is some contributory factor of the squirrels, how much we don't know. But I know you had mentioned to them at that time a plan that you were going to put in place. And I'm wondering how that's going. Can you tell us a little bit about it? And has it been to Eric's committee yet?
Yeah. Mr. Escobar.
Mayor Bloom, Councilmember Falcone. Yes, that plan was discussed this early morning at our IPM Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, and we did get an exemption passed through our committee to apply a Difazanon, which is a bait to control rodents at the park. So we will be looking into using that material in the future. Currently, right now, we are trapping our squirrels, and we're going to try that first. And the difficulty catching and trapping squirrels and such is the fact that when you're applying materials like the ones that we just ended up getting an exemption for, the difficulty is the park is always so green. Normally, what would happen if you were applying this material, you would apply it when the plant material would actually die off, and now there would be no more food for the squirrels to eat. But since we have ice plant, we have turf and such, it makes it a real difficulty. But we're always going to put our best foot forward, and we'll be working with our IPM consultant, Mr. Phil Boyce. And we'll be going through and naturally working with my director and assistant director and also with council in regards to what steps we are taking regarding this application.
Well, I appreciate that bit of information, and I don't know, Eric came up to the front, but also notice to the folks on shoreline and in the Marine Terrace area and the folks, even in the Greater Mesa area, because that park is very, very, very heavily used. And I know that there are a couple of different, very good outlets to get a lot of people aware of things. On the Mesa these days, there's a couple of very, very active groups, so I might speak to you after about that.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas. Whoops, let me turn that back on there.
If I might add just a couple of other things. I think there's a series of factors that affected the park there. And as you just mentioned, Councilmember Falcone, a lot of it is just natural processes. So that's the starting point. This is a coastal ocean, a coastal bluff top here that we're talking about, and so these processes happen. Bluffing, or slumping and sliding on bluffs occur. Squirrels may have contributed because they burrow on the bluff, so yeah, that is a contributing factor. We have non-native ice plant, which is very, very heavy, sucks up all the water, making the bluffs a lot more brittle, and it just pulls it down, and there you lose bluff top that way. That park is very heavily irrigated. A lot of the geologists we've started to talk to and hear from say that irrigation is a really big problem out there. And that's also making the bluffs non-stable. So one of the things that the committee took up today was, we do have an overabundance of squirrels there. We've been implementing nontoxic programs out there for the last four, four and a half years, and they've been successful. But now, you know, we have this slide that occurred there, so the advisory committee did grant an exemption for using the higher-tier material. We may, as we discussed today, we may not have to use it, depending on what other things we come up with. But I think it's really important that the community knows that, you know, the community demanded this integrated pest management program. And now that we see a failure of the bluff, some people are saying, well, it's the squirrels. What are you going to do to get those squirrels out of there? Go back to the pesticide thing? So we're kind of being pulled from all sides here. So I just would ask that the community here work with us and work with the committee and the council to figure out the best solution. We gave the Parks Department today, on behalf of the advisory committee, a tool. But that's only one thing. There's a lot of other things that need to happen, too. And we may need to analyze, like I said, the irrigation, the drainage system, and other things. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Through everybody's help, we'll reach the balance. And I've got my little pest-integrated cup there, so.
Very nice.
Thank you all very much.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Falcone, just to add one more thing, because this is the other important message to Shoreline Park users. The other biggest contributor to the squirrel population is people who feed the squirrels. There is a lot of natural food for the squirrels to eat in the park, that's why they're surviving. But we really need the community to stop feeding the squirrels. And so it's hard. We have signs up, they take them down. When we talk to the people in Shoreline Park about talking to people when they see others doing it, they say they do, and people don't take that message well. So we just need to keep getting that message out there. Please don't feed the squirrels. Thank you.
Yeah, when you see 300 squirrels in a space that's supposed to only hold 30, it's a tough one. But yeah, well, we thank you for all your efforts on this. Mr. Williams and then Mr. House.
Well, first of all, one possible other solution or alternative, I think, that should be examined at Shoreline is falconry. I know you've looked at it before. I've asked you to look at owl boxes and roosts, but that's sort of passive tool, whereas we've had real success up at Tahigus, or the county has had real success up at Tahigus with falconry. And the Pakara, not that I'm enthusiastic about them as a local company, but they have been very successful with falconry in controlling pests at the Pakara. I would say that that kind of, and Nancy's comment really leads into something that I really wanted to talk about, which is preventative measures that the community at large can do and that we can do. I've been going from park to park, really paying attention to eating areas and to our trash cans in eating areas. And I think we could probably get a lot of benefit for very little expense if we paid more attention to that. I would say particularly Leadbetter Beach is one of the worst spots. We have extremely old cans, and they don't close. So seagulls or skunks or whatever else can get in and get that food. So it's both something that we could do in public education. I would say that we should, as Eric indicated, make more use of those water bills to put out, questioning people not to put out their cat and dog food, for instance, which contributes to our inordinately high amounts of rats, mice, and skunks. And that people realize that you're not doing a favor to any bird or animal species to be feeding them. We have an overabundance, as is indicated by the report, of skunks, crows, gulls, rats, and mice. Not that most people actively decide to try to feed rats and mice, but they do actively feed the others by putting out cat food and dog food in large amounts out in open areas. And this not only affects the kind of controls that the city has to engage in, but also affects native species acutely that are decimated because we have just way more skunks and crows than most wild areas would have because they get a lot out of our trash. So I really think that that's something that we should be concentrating particularly on our most-used park areas, like Leadbetter, where you just have a huge amount of food that's consumed by animal species at some of those spots. I noticed that there was no usage for the Creeks Department. I wondered if that was an indication that there was also no arundo removal last year at the Creeks Department, which I actually would wonder whether that's a good thing because it seems to me that a dry year would be the best time to try to remove arundo.
Mr. Escobar.
Mayor Bloom, Councilmember Williams, council members. We'll start off with the Creeks item regarding arundo removal. Yes, we have removed arundo. It's all been mechanically done. However, we are currently working with David Chang, our farm advisor with the county ag office, and he will also be going through with his pilot project that he's been working on for the past five years for arundo removal within that corridor as well, using a chemical called Rodeo, which is lithophosphate. And he will go through and knock them down to the ground and then go through and just brush on a little bit of material to control that. So he has a pilot project that he's working on currently right now. So that's positive in regards to that. So once again, with the Creeks folks, no chemicals were applied. Going out in regards to Leadbetter Beach, in regards to trash cans, I'm glad you brought that out. We are working very hard to get Leadbetter some new improvements. If you haven't gone by the park lately, we do have electricity and some water for park users to use when they rent the park out, so that's a positive. The other item, though, that we do have in our park show currently right now, we have brand-new garbage cans with dome lids and such that we will be setting out in the park within the next couple of months. I have a actual walkthrough with, hopefully, more than just a handful of contractors to go through and install 10 brand-new concrete pads at the park. You know, if you notice the concrete pads at that Leadbetter Park, they are in dire need of some help. So we will be going through and doing network as well. Regarding a trash pickup, because naturally you hit the nail on the head, Councilmember Williams, regarding sanitation being a big part of IPM, most people don't realize that. I believe it was the last edition of our annual report, I purposely went through and put a garbage can and snap trap on that cover so people would realize that sanitation is a big part of IPM. And that is why with our carriers who go through and help in regards to emptying garbage cans, they do that consistently. But I do want to give my hats off to our park staff that every single day they're pulling trash cans, whatever, they are halfway full or full. And that's a practice that we've been doing as far as I can know. So I just want to give you that information. And then also regarding the falconry, yeah, we have tried, and we have looked at that. I think you were with us on a walkthrough when we brought an individual out back in, I believe it was 2002, and the gentleman that we did contact, the actual project would just be too great for him because of just the amount of squirrels in the park. We currently do have two falcons that are in our park system. I'm not going to tell you where because people start looking at them, they'll scare them away. But naturally, with the falcon, they can only eat one squirrel per every two weeks. So that makes it really difficult.
Two hundred squirrels? That's a lot of weeks.
When they're paid to do it, they don't actually eat them. They just keep on killing them.
I'll also note that, you know, we actually talked about, you know, some gopher snakes and such. I'm not opposed to that, but then I think I began getting phone calls as well as Nancy and Jill regarding.
There's snakes in your park?
Yeah, and so that's a difficult one. I did have the opportunity to go to Hawaii for the first time in my life in October of last year, and I was with some friends, and we actually walked this beautiful park. I apologize, I couldn't pronounce the name if my life depended on it. But it was a gorgeous park, but they had feral cats. And that was quite interesting, just to see that. And my wife was going, I shouldn't have brought you to the park, because here I am taking photos and just, I'm looking at all the amenities, and my friends are going, what are you doing? But, so, there you go.
And then just my last point would be on private homes. If you add together all the backyards that we have in the city, it's a lot more acreage than our park system. And so it's at a certain level, when we keep on spending money to decrease pesticides in our park system, it might be, we might be able to decrease a lot more pesticide if we spent a little bit of those funds to decrease pesticide, personal pesticide use in homes. And so I'm still advocating now for, I think, the fourth year in a row that we be willing to buy some less toxic materials and actually have an exchange program with people at their homes. Like if they got Roundup, we go, we'll give you this least toxic material if you give us your Roundup. And I'll walk door-to-door if you guys buy the materials. I mean, I really feel strongly that we would get a lot of reduction for very little expenditure because all these things that we've done, many people at their homes haven't done because they don't know how to do it. And you don't have to answer that now, but if you want to, you can.
I have to confess, I saw a hawk at Shoreline Park because there were some crows making a big fuss, and so I looked to see what they were fussing over, and they were fussing over a hawk sitting there. And I kind of yelled at the crows, leave him alone, we need him. But, you know, they will come naturally if there's food there, so that's kind of a thought. Mr. Escobar.
Okay. Mayor Bloom, Councilmember Williams and council members. Regarding the item to go through and do a replenishment or actually an exchange program, that is a great idea, there's no doubt about it. I was very fortunate that you were able to send me to St. Louis a couple of years back. And in regards to that IPM symposium, I did go through and speak with quite a few folks in housing developments, such as our own, that they were actually doing that sort of a program. I think I did explain that to you, Councilmember Williams, you know, that in time we would get there. And, you know, once again, though, in order to do a program like that, we have to sit down and talk, you know, because it is many, many hours, but positive hours in regards to doing an exchange program like that. I will let you know, though, too, that working with our IPM consultant, Phil Boyce, naturally within our parks, our airport, our waterfront, Public Works, we're doing a lot of great work, there's no doubt about that. Regarding building maintenance, they're doing good work as well, but we continue to need to do good work. In regards to our material list, in regards to our green materials, you'll notice there's a lot of materials there that our homeowners can use. This report is actually on our site to be able to read and use. And the other item, working with Mr. Phil Boyce, this year is actually the year that I'm working with facilities to actually put together our list and actually come up with a more comprehensive way to control pests within our buildings. So this is that particular year. And now that we have our new facility manager, Mr. Jim Dewey, who comes from UCSB and is very familiar with green, we'll be working with him and also with Mr. Joe Gonzalez and staff as well in order to putting this together and making this a true endeavor. So I just wanted to let you know that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. House.
I just try to be brief here, but I just want to appreciate Mr. Cardenas for bringing up the reason why we got into this in the first place. And I know that from my wife and I, when cancer touches your family, you suddenly notice how many people have it, how many people are being affected by that, and it's just like, where is this stuff coming from? It's like, you know, almost epidemic proportions, and you realize, you know, what did we do? How did, where did that come from? But when you read these reports about the effects of some of the things that we've been using in our parks or near our schools or in our homes and our backyards, and you realize what those effects can be, you begin to realize we're kind of immersed in this stuff. And so I really, really appreciate, I appreciate this council, I appreciate EDC and others in the public, but certainly the staff for carrying this out because it really is making a difference. There will be people in the future who will not have to go through some of the things that we're seeing now because they were in a clean, green environment. So I very much appreciate what we're doing here and the deeper intent. I recognize also it's a huge culture shift. I spoke with a manager that worked in our Parks Department for many years before, when this was first coming on, and he had just grave reservations because that pristine park clipped to the, you know, the quarter inch around the edge, everything perfectly manicured environment doesn't, isn't necessarily what you get when you do IPM. But I think our public is okay with it. I think the parks are great. I think that the adding of those concrete strips over a mile you've put in, that saves labor, saves on the pesticides, makes it look crisp and clean. labor, saves on the pesticides, makes it look crisp and clean, wow, what a simple solution. So these things are just wonderful. Anyway, the last part, I go completely with what Mr. Williams and others have said about how private use really is the next frontier on this. I mean, the amount of advertising that goes into the gardening industry that encourages us to do the exact opposite of IPM in our homes is just insane. And you go into any of the garden shops or any, I mean, there's just got to be kind of a revolution of consciousness about this, and so we need to look to our local vendors, adult education, the programs they offer there, in this elementary and high schools, and the kind of message that's conveyed there. Of course, on our TV, we've been doing it here in the city on Channel 18, getting the word out. A volunteer program would be phenomenal, but whatever it is that we can do to really convey to the public at large, that just doing it in our parks, just having IPM in our parks is not sufficient, that it really needs to be something that all of us in town take seriously for our own health and for our neighbors. So, thank you very much for your leadership, and to this council, before I got on it, for the leadership that brought this about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for the report. I think we're done. Item number 18. No?
Sixteen.
Item number sixteen, introduction of ordinance approving the first amended and restated lease with Santa Barbara Maritime Museum. Recommendation, the council approve the first amended and restated lease, number 19075, and introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the first amended and restated lease, number 19075, with an initial term of five years plus seven five-year options with the Santa Barbara Maritime Museum, effective April 10, 2008, for a 7,725 square foot space located at 113 Harbor Way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brightley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, my name is John Brightley, I'm the waterfront director for the city, and I'll be making the presentation today. As you know, we're here today to talk about the Maritime Museum's lease, and up on the screen is a picture of the Waterfront Center Building, where obviously the Maritime Museum has been housed now for almost 10 years. I'd like to acknowledge, obviously, there are a number of members of the Maritime Museum Board that are here, but in particular Joey Ryder and Julie McDonald, which we work closely with on this lease, and I think they would like to address the council after I'm finished.
Okay.
Just a little bit of background on the Waterfront Center Building and the Maritime Museum. As many of you know, this building has a long history, served as a naval reserve center for many years, was purchased from the Navy, or actually was given to the Navy during World War I, and then repurchased again by the city in 1993 for a cost of $2.4 million, where we helped relocate the Navy to a different facility off-site. At that time, we had substantial costs associated with renovations to make the building a little more user-friendly. As most of you know, it was a large gymnasium with support facilities in and around it. And today, it's the home of Chuck's Waterfront Grill, the Endless Summer Bar Cafe, NOAA, which is our National Oceanic Administrative Administration, involved with the Channel Islands Marine Sanctuary, and the Maritime Museum itself. Go ahead. Again, when we were acquiring this building, and as part of the Harbor Master Plan, this building was really subject to a lot of discussion and deliberation as to what type of uses would occupy the building, how we would lease it, how we would make it a bit more user-friendly. But clearly, it was intended at the time we reacquired it to use it as additional revenue for the waterfront department. And I'm happy to report, today, this building does generate $450,000 to $500,000 annually, so it has met its original intent to add revenue to the department. About the same time, the Maritime Museum was in its formation stages, and they had their eye on this location, in that they felt this would serve very well for their museum, and at that time, they were receiving clearly support, not only in the harbor, but throughout the community, and with strong financial backing. When they were selected as the primary tenant for the building, we put forward a lease. It's hard to believe that's almost 10 years old now. It was approved in 1998, it was a 40-year term, it was a series of five-year options, we're in our second five-year option period. Believe it or not, they are the largest tenant in the building, actually with greater square footage than the restaurant, of just over 7,825 square feet. And their current monthly obligation, base rent, is $10,277. They participate with other tenants in the building, paying common area maintenance costs of almost $4,000, total monthly costs of over $14,000, and total annual rent of just Again, almost a year ago, the Maritime Museum representatives were before the council. At that time, they made a presentation and proposal to consider some type of form, or some form of rent relief. And what was considered at that time, or suggested, was a buyout or prepayment of their lease obligations. That was considered by council, and is really the beginning of the process for the negotiations. It was based on that request, staff has spent, really, the past year, working together with the board and representatives to come forward with an agreement and the lease that we have before you today. As part of that negotiation, in working with you, the city council, staff was asked to look at a variety of different evaluation or alternatives that we might have for the building. Really, what we were asked to do is look to see what the tenant space could be used as, besides Maritime Museum, and what is its highest and best use in its current configuration. And again, it's a difficult building, they're really in the old gymnasium area of the building. And so, we are, staff is of the opinion, the highest and best use is as, if it wasn't a Maritime Museum, a banquet or meeting hall. We looked at a variety of different comparable sites and rents that would give us a baseline as the type of income that could be generated. We looked at the Veterans Memorial Building on Cabrillo Boulevard, we looked at the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion, managed by Park and Rec, along with the Chase Palm Park Building. And based on that, we feel, although we could generate about the same amount of rent or income as what is derived from the Maritime Museum, there are impacts that we think outweigh that as a viable alternative. The impacts of increased traffic and parking, and potential impacts to other tenants in the harbor, really led us to believe that the best use from where it is today is that leasing to the Maritime Museum. We also looked a little bit at the museum's budget and finances to make sure that it was viable, and what role the rent played in their budget, and also what potential revenue impacts there would be to the city should there be a reduction or elimination of the rent altogether. Staff has now successfully reached an agreement with the Maritime representatives. We have assigned lease with them, which is before you today. We believe it is consistent with council direction, and this amended restated lease has the following terms. It involves a total buyout payment of $1 million. The rent obligation would continue, in that the Maritime Museum would have up to five years to come up with that $1 million, or they could pay it off sooner than that five years. Any rent payments that would be paid during that period of time would be credited towards the $1 million. Another important aspect that we felt should be changed with Maritime Museum, and that is to return the retail store to the front of the building to add some additional activity and vibrancy. The museum has agreed to do that, and they will be paying separate rent in addition, or separate from the buyout, at about $10,000 annually, or a dollar per square foot, or 10% of gross revenues, whichever is greater. And they will continue to pay the CAM charges and slip rents that are contained within the lease. And one of the things that I think is important for me and my department is the relationship that we've had and developed over the years with the Maritime Museum. Really, since the decision to include them as a long-term tenant, that strong relationship has grown, not only with the department, but the harbor community, and I believe as the Santa Barbara community as a whole. The museum, obviously, has sponsored many events, such as fall ship visits. In fact, we have the Spirit of Dana Point coming this month. They have focused many of their programs for educating our youth and coordinating with the schools. And their mission is to celebrate our rich maritime history here in Santa Barbara, which we also support. Relative to rent, they've already paid, over the past 10 years, $1,150,000. They've invested over $2 million in building, and as I've indicated, they are very active as a harbor tenant. And with that, we're really to the point of recommending to you what we believe is an approved or amended restated Maritime Museum lease, based on the terms which I just outlined. We think this will assist the museum with their fundraising efforts and donor support going forward. We believe it keeps them viable into the future, and for the most part, will have no immediate fiscal impact on the waterfront department. When you look at the five-year continuation of rents, or the million-dollar payment, that puts us five to eight years, which are really status quo. So we will be able to evaluate any long-term impacts going forward. And with that, I would answer any questions you might have. And again, as I indicated, I know Joey would like to speak to the council.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McDonald, did you want to speak? I don't know. Oh, I have, yes, I have George Ryder. Yes, go ahead, sorry. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just saw you sitting there. And I did put you on the spot.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. This may not be the perfect deal, but we feel that city council and staff have met us more than halfway towards greatly strengthening the financial viability and the future of the Maritime Museum, which is a public benefit institution. This will give renewed confidence to our donor base, allowing us to bring even more exciting, interesting, educational, cultural, and historical programs of our rich maritime heritage to the Santa Barbara community and its many visitors. As you know, during our short history, since 2000, we've had more than 200,000 visitors, including 46,000 kids from 124 different schools and agencies. With our Tall Ship Program, Spirit of Dana Point, last year we had 442 4th and 5th graders participate in that program, and over 95% of those kids were from the underserved community. And here's the, we've got the Coming Back Friday again, they're going to be here Friday, and then through the Sea Fest through the next couple of weeks. Helping our great staff make all this work, we have had over, we have over 150 dedicated volunteers who've donated over 50,000 hours. So, with the historical, while the historical and cultural pieces are important, the real drumbeat of the Maritime Museum is education. Kids of all ages will benefit greatly from the enhanced educational opportunities afforded by this restricted, restructured lease. With the waterfront department, the staff, and city council have worked hard, fairly, and patiently on this, and behalf of all of us from the museum, we are very appreciative of the process and the end result. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. It's good to, it was a lot of work, and it's good to hear that at least both sides feel somewhat satisfied. Mr. Horton?
I'm just ready to comment whenever you're ready.
Go ahead.
Okay.
No more slips.
In some form or another, this matter has been in front of me the whole time I've been on council.
Right.
And it has been one that's caused some anxiety and some considerable amount of work for us on council and the staff as well. During the over six years that I've been on council, I think the value of the museum has become evident to the community. I think the importance of the maritime culture to the community is just as vital as is what the Trust for Historic Preservation does in the downtown. It's just another part of what makes our community unique. And I think this museum fits in with the package of the Natural History Museum, the Trust for Historic Preservation, the Art Museum, and all the other, particularly now that we have a children's museum coming online in the future, I hope. I think it all makes a wonderful package that supports families and youth in our community that is something that we're all striving for. I think that the, and also I wanted to say that the surfboard exhibit, which we, some of us attended over the weekend, was a lot of fun. I think the role and function of the museum has been evolving over time and becoming more clear. And I think maybe six years ago, it wasn't quite as clear as it is now, but from what I see lately, I think it is becoming more defined, and to me, it's being defined in the right way. I also think that, from a financial standpoint, which is more my background, I am aware that there are certain limitations on what a museum, an educational museum, can do. They have a certain limitation as far as pricing, as far as what they can do on their balance sheet, and I think they're trying as hard as they can. I think they've run a lean and mean operation, and I believe they've done about all they can do from their side of it. And having said all that, I'm very supportive of this, today will support it, and I think, as Joey said, it's not a perfect agreement, probably from the standpoint of either side, but it is a compromise that both sides have worked on, have tried to accomplish, and I believe it's going to best serve the entire community, and I'll be happy to make a motion to the effect later on that day.
Okay, Mr. Williams, and then Ms. Falcone.
Well, I want to make my comments brief. I just think that it's wonderful that in a community like this, and when there was some very big stakes, like the future of the museum and maybe the future fiscal stability of the waterfront at stake, that we could come together, talk about our needs, and come up with a solution that is mutually beneficial. And I think that's, that doesn't always happen in the world of politics and in the world of political power. And so, to me, it's a great, restores a lot of my confidence that people can cooperate and be team players, and makes me all the more enthusiastic when I go to events and see the wonderful programming that the Maritime Museum is bringing to the community. And I've seen that only increase during my term of office, and I hope to continue participating and seeing that the Maritime Museum thrives. And I think, released from some of the weight of the level of financial obligation, this should be one where your donors and your potential future donors have a confidence in the future of the Maritime Museum.
Good. Ms. Falcone?
Wow, huh? This has been a long one coming. It's been a long one coming. As Mr. Horton said, this has certainly been with no, you know, no secret on my plate for over six years, since I got here. Just because, well, I have a personal connection to the sea and my family, but because of Santa Barbara, and what Santa Barbara is, and how it developed, and when, before the railroad, and before the people would come over the pass, and before they would come up the highway and so forth... and so forth, they got here by ship. They got all their food, they got all their lumber, and they got all their supplies of any sort of any kind from the ships. In fact, there was a period, I'm not very sure, maybe middle 1800s, I think, where the only furniture that was allowed to be imported into Santa Barbara had to come from Spain. There are places that are dot along, as Mr. Horton said, the Fund for Historic Preservation has done a very good job of bringing a lot of early life in Santa Barbara to life, but there are also these places like the San Julian Ranch, which if you walk into the main ranch house, it is all that Spanish furniture and it's like walking into a time warp. And what the Maritime Museum does for us is it gives us a context from the beginning of when the Chumash came or the Chumash were here, but how they lived. And it really takes you through all the very different phases. And I remember in the beginning, as the Maritime Museum started doing events, every time I went in, there was something new, there was some new exhibit, and it was all growing. And it's taken, it's taken a while, but in fact, one of the first things that I know I've sort of got recognized for was doubling the grant that went to the Maritime Museum to half a million dollars. And that was to go specifically from our RDA, but that was to go specifically to build exhibits. And one of the exhibits that was the beneficiary of a lot of that money evidently is the new surfing exhibit. Now let's see, that's one, two, three, four, you know, that's going on five years. These things take this kind of time. So people who thought that the Maritime Museum was going to open its doors and have, you know, thousands of people flock in, especially since it's sort of in an obscure location and it wasn't even advertised by the Conference and Bureau at that point, you know, that was just, you know, not the way it works. So this project takes time, it takes nurturing, and all of you have done all of that for so many years and for so long, and I'm proud to have always been a part of it. I'm happy to second Mr. Horton's motion and I'm glad we're here and I'm glad we got here together. Thank you.
Mr. House.
One of the things I'm hopeful for is that once this particular mountain has been topped, the attention of your fund development folks can really be on raising the money for the new exhibits and all the new displays and the activities and things that are there. Because like in the staff report, it says, "Today, the museum's facility serves as both an attraction and venue for many different activities at the harbor." And I see it as really the diamond. I mean, it's just, it's that sparkle, it's just such an important part of our community. And it is your job that you've taken on, thank you for doing it, to tell the story of the city's maritime history and its living traditions and both the industry as well as in sport. So I'm just really glad you all stood up for this thing and that you've hung in there so long. And I'm really grateful to our staff. And Mr. Bridley, thank you. And thank you very much for your willingness to work hard to make this turn out because that was a hard squeeze. And I think we're gonna, I think the community at large and all those kids are going to get a chance to go there and benefit from this. And just how wonderful that is. Anyway, that's just really great, thank you. And I will be supporting Mr. Horton's motion.
Ms. Schneider.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your patience after all this time and it might not be perfect, but I'm sure you think it's better. And to me, that I hope will help with your funding base is that they see a finite number and a timeline that might help then get to that point. So then they know once that point is reached, everything else that can come into the museum is going to go directly to programming or scholarships or whatever else. And that's going to be a big boost, I think, to your donor base. And so I see that as a big highlight. I'm happy to see the gift shop component to it there. That's always a fun part of any museum. And we need to do our part, and I know all of us up here will continue to work on making sure people know how to get to the museum from Sterns Wharf, from the harbor area, from East Beach over to West Beach. And that is a project that unfortunately, it's been taking a little longer than we'd like, but wanting to put it on the fast track and make sure that the pathway from Cabrillo Boulevard through the parking lot and towards the harbor can be as clear as it can. And so when they get there, they have such an amazing number of places to go, including the Maritime Museum. So I'm very pleased to support this so we can continue to strengthen and honor our Santa Barbara's maritime history and thank you for all your leadership.
Okay, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too appreciate what the Maritime Museum does and I think it's a great idea. And I'm very appreciative of the work that the waterfront staff has done in evaluating all the complicated issues surrounding this and coming to the new lease agreement. I do have some concerns and I realize that the direction on this was set long before I was here. And I appreciate that you on the waterfront staff have done exactly what you were asked to do by council and done an excellent job of it. I still have to say though, I'm concerned about the fact that the original agreement that was entered into, my understanding is that a conservative estimate of the present value of the lease is $2.7 million. And so the lease buyout of a million dollars, though you've told me that you feel that the overall financial health of the waterfront district is secure, it still gives me minor palpitations. So I just wanted to make it clear that I'm very supportive of the work you've done, that you did exactly what you asked to. And I also want to make it clear to the museum board that you have done a great job and you've tried to create a great institution. Maybe we went into this with unrealistic expectations about the kind of revenue that a museum could generate when this started 10 years ago.
Okay, and I'm, Mr. Williams, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I just would want for the benefit of viewers, people to understand that, and I think the community recognizes that the value to Santa Barbara as a city of having a museum at the harbor is different than having a Macy's at the harbor. And that while the city might negotiate in a harder way with a private entity, a for-profit entity that does a service but is not vital sort of to the fabric of Santa Barbara as a community. And I think really when, one of the things that sets apart Santa Barbara from other communities of its size is the wealth of history, the wealth of culture, and it is difficult to quantify that. And so it's just not as simple as a market value of 2.7 versus a buyout of a million dollars. And so I still defend this as something that balances those two in an effective way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Horton.
I just want to thank Mr. Williams for stating that. And I do think that those of us that are sitting up here were by and large elected to help continue the good aspects of our community and I think this is one of them. And so I'm happy to move that council approved the First Amendment and related lease number 19075 and the subsequent paragraph that follows on the staff report for the clerk.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. I just wanted to say that, you know, I think it's really, this museum has come a long, long way and that surf exhibit is really amazing, so I hope people go and see it. But I also wanted to say that we are, Ms. Schneider was talking about, we are working on the sidewalks down there, but we also need to work on a signage way and lighting and so on to get people to walk from Sterns Wharf over to the harbor. And I've been invited to a mayor's design institute where they take eight mayors and they put them with some really good designers and each of us brings a project. And I've decided that the project I'm going to bring is how to get people from Sterns Wharf to the harbor. And there's got to be a way to do it and I'm going to ask these four designers, these national designers, to help us with that. And so I hope something good comes out of that. I'll bring it back, that's next month, so that'll be interesting. But very supportive of the Maritime Museum, we really love it. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One, no. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming down and waiting all that time. Okay, we are at item 17, we actually have council member assignment reports if there's any. I was going to talk about the surf exhibit, we already talked about that. Today, Mr. House and I were at Fiesta down at the Carriage Museum and it's starting, folks, but there's a, the reason I mention it is because there's a whole calendar of dates that you will want to get on your calendar, on your personal calendars, and we'll pass those around in our office. So, yep, Fiesta's on its way. Okay, anybody else, Ms. Schneider?
This Friday is the County Arts Symposium at Cabrillo, the Cabrillo Arts Center, and a big portion of it is going to be talking about all the work that's happened in the last year regarding how to create a financially sustainable arts community. This is, I know, the whole issue about ticket surcharges or thoughtful gifts or whatever, you know, the mechanism is to create a sustainable funding stream. There's been a lot of work in the last year, so this will be a good way to get an update about that. So I encourage people to contact Ginny Brush or, it's for this Friday, 8:30 to 3:00 or 4:00 on Friday.
I think it's 3 o'clock. Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Falcanti.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. These reports or these reporting opportunities, I know that when we had them at the beginning of the agenda, they took, well, you know, close to an hour probably because everybody reported on every little thing that everybody did, which took a long time. Now, now we have it at the end of the agenda and it's so sporadic and by the time we get to one, you know, two or three weeks have passed and several important things have happened, some, you know, fairly, you know, not too thrilling things. So I'm wondering if we want to take a look at this again and maybe put it up front maybe once a month? And then we can cherry pick off the last several weeks or months items that we have gone to to really keep the public informed, because people really did like to hear it. Maybe not every little, you know, fundraising party we went to, but Friday night, a number of us were up at the League of California Cities Division Dinner and we heard from Senator Feinstein's representative. And we're all going to need to talk about a couple of propositions, 98 and 99, that are on the June ballot, but there's no, there's no real forum to do that. So I'm wondering if anybody's at all interested in rethinking how we go about this a little bit. I understand the idea of putting it at the end, but I think it might have worked a little too well.
We each have a minute.
We each have a minute.
Well, you know, I actually was going to suggest that-
But if we know when to bring the information, then we can bring it.
I do think we should take Michael Self's suggestion and-
And hold ourselves.
Time limit ourselves.
Which would be wonderful.
Which I think is very democratic. If we're going to time, you know, hold the public to a certain amount of time, we should time ourselves as well.
That's right.
And so maybe two minutes at the beginning.
At the beginning.
Then, you know, something like that. But I would like to also report on a couple of things. I did do a couple of things in visits to the East Coast. One is I toured a facility in Boston, actually it's in a little area, a sort of immigrant port area that has had traditionally Irish and Italian, but now largely Puerto Rican and Haitian, and it's in transition called Chelsea. And it went to the best youth wraparound services center I've ever heard of called Roca. And it just, the amount of things that they do in this location is mind-boggling. And I took some pictures of their charts and how they do their employment programs and I'll try to use some of that knowledge in our efforts to tackle youth and gang issues because it's really an award-winning program. It's expensive, but it's also enormously successful. I also went to DC and did my yearly lobbying on behalf of Mission Creek and, but also got a chance to meet with Ken Overstar's Chief of Staff, who's the head of the Transportation Committee for Congress. And because we, I think that alternative transportation being part of the reauthorization of safety lieu is a huge thing and something that I think the chairman will give some support to, but I think that that's something vital for areas like ourselves that are looking for alternative transportation solutions to our commuter and congestion problems. Tom? Okay, I'm done. Except for B.C. Centro, if you would like to bicycle, is at La Casa de la Rosa this Saturday.
This Saturday, all day. Mr. Horton.
Last week, a group of us had been meeting for a long time on the needs for downtown childcare, had a kickoff meeting. This has to do with the employers finding that their employees have an increasingly hard time to know what to do with their kids during the day. We tried this 10, 15 years ago. Times have changed, there's more and more people commuting, they're more willing to bring their kids with them if there's an economical, safe, and effective childcare system available, and that's what we're trying to work on.
Okay, that's very good. Can you go ahead and read items number 17 and 18, please?
Item number 17, conferences real property negotiators, and item number 18, public employee performance evaluation, city administrator.
Okay, and we will adjourn out of those closed sessions, there won't be anything to report. Thank you very much.[1714.71]